Okay, welcome to the Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session, Monday, July 10. We have a couple of council members who are excused tonight, Tolomarts and Mary Lou Polly. First item on our agenda is Transportation Concurrent Kickoff Briefing presented by City's Consultant Torsten Lee Now. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, great, thank you.
Welcome, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, thank you for having me. Okay, so we did start the concurrency model update a couple of months ago, and I met with city staff and we got sort of kicked off on getting, starting to do data transfer and whatnot, so it felt like a good time to also do the same with council. Again, my name is Torsten. If you don't understand anything that I'm saying along the way, because I can easily get into sort of the engineering, you know, speak, please stop me and ask, what does that mean? So what I'm going to do tonight, just really quickly remind everybody what concurrency is if you don't know what it is. Very brief, I have a slide that sort of shows the evolution of concurrency in Issaquah, so I'll do a really brief sort of history there, and then I'll spend the bulk of the time talking about how we do concurrency in Issaquah, and then the latter half of the meeting, talk about what my scope of work is to do the update this go-around. So for those of you who don't know, concurrency is required in the state of Washington. Local jurisdictions must adopt a concurrency system, but they do have a lot of flexibility in defining their own concurrency system. But they do need to approve a concurrency system that will prohibit development from moving forward if your transportation standards are not met. And you do have the ability to set your own transportation standards. Okay, and then, so basically concurrent, the word concurrency came from the fact that you should have transportation improvements concurrent with the development that's occurring too, and that's defined in Washington State within six years. So, the idea being that you don't approve a ton of development and the transportation system sort of goes to, you know, to a state of failure for a long period of time before you catch up and build a transportation system that-
You might have to get a little closer to the microphone.
Okay, sorry.
Then, Torsten, I have a question. You mentioned six years. So can you shed a little light on, there's also been a 10-year, we've talked about a 10-year timeframe, and that's the timeframe when we have to, what, spend impact fees? And so what's the relationship between the 10 years to spend impact fees and the six-year concurrency?
Once you, so the six years is a development, if a development is approved with a certain set of projects that they need to build in order for that development to move forward, that transportation improvement needs to be in place within the six years. The impact fee is, it's somewhat related in this case, because we have now married concurrency and impact fees together in Issaquah, so in essence, you know, you may be coming closer to spending the money within the six years rather than that 10-year timeframe, but you do have a 10-year window to spend any money that comes in for-
Six years if there's a project that is identified then?
Correct, a specific project that's identified.
Great, thanks.
Question?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. And a project that's been identified, how does it relate to SEPA projects?
So, the new concurrency system that's been developed for Issaquah now, we've, we have identified all the projects through concurrency that need to be in place in order to accommodate a certain amount of development in the city. And, so that's how they're married, so if, as long as the development that you're approving is consistent with what we've included in our concurrency modeling efforts, as long as it's consistent with that, then you're in line with SEPA. If there is, if there's a development that doesn't fit within that window, so let's say it's outside of a certain area that we've allowed, or that we've assumed growth to occur, or if it's a different kind of land use than what we've assumed to occur, then they would have to do a special SEPA study that is outside of concurrency to determine any other transportation improvements that might be needed outside of the list that we've already come up with.
Sounded like the first part of your answer said that any impacts identified by SEPA would already be re-identified in our list of concurrency projects. That's what it sounded like you said, but I don't think you mean that.
So, you may be asking a different question than what I just answered. So, if there's a transportation improvement that's going to be built in the city, it does have to go through an environmental study, if you will. So, let's say there is a specific project that might have environmental impacts, wetland impacts, or, you know, whatever, other environmental impacts, that's part of a SEPA study that, that needs to be done for the transportation improvement itself. And that's part of the cost of building a project, so we've included the cost of environmental studies, the design, and the actual construction within that impact fee estimate. And it sounds like you wanted to answer.
So, maybe just to put a little bit of a different lens on it, so, so the Planned Action EIS has identified a certain capacity, and what Torsten, I think, was answering was that yes, those SEPA, bigger SEPA capacity improvements have been planned and identified, and so people pay impact fees to then have us build those improvements. But when you do your specific project in a specific location, SEPA might say that there are safety needs that have to happen from a traffic standpoint, like, for example, there might be a left turn pocket, or there might be some other site-related item that would not be part of our bigger kind of capacity analysis. So SEPA still does look at some parcel-specific requirements that could come out of that review.
All right, thank you Keith.
When you're talking about the planned action ordinance, you're talking about Central Issaquah Plan?
Only. Correct.
Not the whole city. Phil?
So, just to take on that a little bit more, so if we have a list of projects in concurrency and they're dealing with this area of the city where we expect development, and what I think I heard you say was, and something happens over here, okay, so it's not really, those projects that we think we need aren't really relevant to that project, then that project would have to do its own analysis on what it needs and would have to do what it needs, because it's not going to get projects from our concurrency list. Is that correct?
If a development comes in that is not part of our assumptions, so, I don't know, you know, an unlikely event that there's something completely new would come into the Highlands, let's say, that isn't already planned up there, that would be something that we haven't accounted for in our concurrency system of transportation improvements, and that would have to go through a separate SEPA study to determine the impacts.
And then, we'd have to make sure that those traffic impacts are now going to be covered by the project somehow, because concurrency is not going to help cover that, because that wasn't covered under the-
Right, the project would still have to pay impact fees for its impacts on the rest of the city.
Right.
And then, in addition to that, it would identify its own specific impacts in that part of the city, right?
And I'm trying to think, if we're focusing everything on Central Issaquah, and somebody tries to develop, you know, out-
Right.
-somewhere else away from that, that's not going to be, fit, fit in so much with that, if there's impacts.
So the concurrency discussion is not about Central Issaquah? Everybody knows that, right?
It's all Issaquah.
This is all, the entire city? Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, so I already mentioned concurrency is required by the, by state law, and I told you that you have the ability to develop your own concurrency system. In fact, almost every agency in, in Washington has a different concurrency system. But, but I do want to point out, your improvements that are part of your concurrency system do not need to be capacity, like transport, you know, adding a lane, or building a new signal, or whatever, they don't need to be capacity-only improvements. So it can include other improvements such as, you know, bus service, ride-sharing programs, looking at demand management, sidewalks, you know, all those types of non-motorized improvements. And in fact, City of Issaquah has included that as a separate, we have an impact fee that does the capacity improvements, but we also have another fee that's charged to do all of these other non-motorized and other types of improvements that are non-capacity related. Okay?
They seem to be capacity-related, though.
They, they really are non, so they're like-
Not creating a lane, but you might be creating, so can you go back one?
Yeah.
Improvements do not need to be capacity-only, but they seem to be creating capacity. So if you, if you get-
And it's, it's in how you define capacity, so, right, so we are creating sort of another way for people to get around the city, and that is capacity, right? It's just not, I guess I'm defining capacity here as sort of road-specific.
Yeah, adding lanes and whatnot.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Good, good clarification, though. Okay, so Issaquah's no stranger to concurrency. Your first ordinance was adopted in 1998. I won't go through the details of all of this, but basically, you know, when it was first adopted, you were out of compliance on day one, so there was no development occurring. Your concurrency system did halt development, like state law said it had to do. If you, if it couldn't, if you couldn't keep up with transportation improvements, you halt development. And that happened for quite a few years. We did a number of updates along the way, and then it was around 2012 when we, well, around 2004, 2007, in that period, you did start development again. And then in 2012, we changed the system to a completely new system, and that changed from a link-based, where we were getting, we were really, a lot of the transportation improvements were linked to non-motorized improvements, and, but you weren't getting any capacity improvements where you really did need them. So we changed the system, made it more of a two-tiered system, where you were looking at both non-motorized and motorized capacity improvements. That occurred in 2012, and then, I'm sorry, in 2007. In 2012, we went to a completely new system that simplified it, where we identified our own set of improvements, the ones the city, you know, council approved, wanted to do, that were part of the CIP, it was part of the whole planning process. We identified a whole set of projects that, that the city wanted to do, and that became part of sort of concurrency. So we weren't, we weren't getting projects anymore that were, you know, a turn lane here, or a signal improvement there, that were things that weren't even in the city's comprehensive plan, or their TIP. And so we really switched it around, and it really turned things around in the city. So there was, there was an error where we were, we were approving projects, development, but there weren't a lot of improvements going on that were really, that was really helping the city. So in the last three, four years, the new concurrency system has really turned that around, and you're starting to get a lot more transportation improvements along with the development that's coming in. So, it's, it's, it's been a change. So we are embarking, what we're envisioning is embarking on using, you know, just really updating that current system and moving forward, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So, we, concurrency is made up of, I'm going to refer to models a lot, there are two models that we use. I'm not going to go into the details of what each of them do, but just for your perspective, there's one that's called a travel demand model that predicts traffic, where traffic is going and how much. And then there's another tool called Synchro, it's an operations model. We feed, the travel demand feeds into the operations model, and it tells us how bad operations will be, or how good operations will be, based on that demand that we've determined will occur. Okay? So, two separate models, but they feed off of each other and work together. So, like I said, a typical output, there's, is a picture of an, of an output that would come from the demand model. It's literally links in the city, you know, all the streets in the city, and then you see little numbers on them, those are the volumes. Those are either predicted or existing volumes, depending on what we pull from the model, for all the roads in the city. Okay? So the other model, the Synchro model, then takes those volumes, those traffic volumes, and analyzes them in terms of how it would operate in the city, and so we get levels of service at intersections, it predicts the amount of delay, how long am I going to wait at a signal before I get through, how many cycle failures might there be, those types of things. We can also use this tool to help optimize signals, so that you get a flow, a free flow of traffic through the signals, so you're not stopping at a red light every single time, so it's, it's helpful in that regard, too. So when we would define level of service, it's like a report card, like A through F, like your child's report card, A being good, F being bad, and there are very specific sort of defined numbers that go along with that, and it's all based on delay, which is how much, how much time am I not moving in, on a road? Yes?
I have a question about optimizing signal timing.
Mm-hmm.
So can you, this is somebody else's question, so if it sounds clunky, it's because I'm reading it. So what does that mean? What are the priorities? Are we trying to move commuter traffic through faster, or timing it so workers and residents can move around town easier? What are the assumptions or goals around optimization?
So, you can optimize to, you can define your own ways to optimize. So, you can time the signals so that you're moving commuter traffic through, through a system of, you know, signals. That's, that is one way to optimize. You can also optimize to other, you know, standards that you want, that you develop. So it, it really does depend, and not all signals in Issaquah are optimized. So, in terms of like a progression along a roadway, they might be optimized individually, but not necessarily along the, along a corridor. So, so there, it's a hard question to answer, and it really does depend on what your goal is for a particular roadway.
Okay.
So something like Front Street, you may not want to optimize to commuter traffic, but something like, I don't know, 56th might be a corridor that you want to optimize to commuter traffic, just get it out of there, kind of thing. So it's, it's all, it's very dependent on what you want your community to be.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Question?
Yeah.
I moved. These are averages, and they're for an entire intersection. Could you explain that a little bit? We've seen data in recent traffic studies where we saw results of model runs that had timings per different turning motions.
Movement.
Different movements.
Absolutely.
And we'd see maybe a certain movement, maybe in an F, others at that same intersection, during that same period of time, weren't F, and the whole thing is netted out for the entire intersection. Could you speak to that?
You, you said it very well. So, the standard in, in Issaquah is level service D for an intersection as a whole, okay? So that could mean that some movements within the intersection are operating less than D, and others are operating better than D. It is averaged together, and it's not a simple average, it's a weighted average by volume. So, if there is a movement that is, you know, 10 cars, and it's a level of service F, but there's another movement that's 1,000 cars, and it's a level of service A, that level of service F gets a much less sort of, you know, it's, it's weighted much less within the whole intersection operations, because it's only 10 cars that are experiencing that, that delay. So, but it is averaged at the whole intersection, so all movements, but when we calculate level of service at intersections, so that tool that I showed earlier that had all the lines, that's doing it by, by movement. So I know every single, like, I know a left turn is operating at level service C, and the through movement, you know, is operating at level service A. I will know when I'm doing the level of service analysis, every single movement, and how it's operating.
So hypothetical, hypothetical question, then. We folk, our current policy is to look at individuals' intersections. Is it, is it even doable? Is anybody doing, actually considered an entire corridor trip as, and having standards for a corridor trip? So, so in other words, linking movements in adjacent?
Yeah, I mean, so typically, the, the through movement is-
Whatever it might be, whether it's straight, or a turn or two.
Right, I mean, the main movement, whatever that is. So maybe a main movement is to turn left at an intersection, that's a lot of times where you've got double lefts, or whatever. Usually, those are the heaviest volumes, and those are the ones that, in the end, are going to have the biggest impact on what the overall level of service is, because-
Who's there waiting?
-the highest volume, right. Right, so typically, when you see that there's a, you know, if someone's saying, oh, this intersection's operating at level service D, but you're not feeling that when you're out there, and maybe it's because you're in a movement that isn't operating at level service D, likely that's a movement that isn't the main movement, or the major movement. And so that's, that's the frustration that, you know, citizens feel, when they're told, oh, this level, this intersection's operating at level service D, and they're feeling something very different.
Thank you for that.
We pretty much went through this. You know, level service A, B, C, and D are generally good operations, obviously, they get worse as you go down through D, but D, a level service D means the intersection is still operating within its capacity abilities. So it's, it is likely operating with most movements getting through within one cycle. There might be one or two movements that have to wait two cycles, but, you know, likely a level service D intersection is generally pretty good. Once you get to level service E, you are approaching, or exceeding level of service at, at more than one, or two, or three movements, and so there's, you know, they're starting to get breakdown. F, you are definitely overcapacity, you're seeing a lot of delays, more than one cycle failure, and so that's, you know-
I have a question?
Yes.
I was just wondering-
You want me to go back?
Yeah, the slide we were just on. Back to the slide we were just on.
Was it that one?
No, this one.
Okay.
Defining A, B, C, and D as good conditions, is that pretty typical to go all the way from A to D for cities, or is that something that could be defined otherwise?
There are specific definitions for each one. I lumped them all together for brevity, but there are very specific definitions for A, B, C, and D. But to answer your question, most agencies in the area won't, D is sort of the, where they go, as a, as a starter. There are some agencies that go to E as a level service standard, and in fact, you have some exceptions, where you're allowing some intersections within Issaquah to operate at E or F, for various reasons, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later, but-
Just a quick point of clarification, you've been saying it as a standard, it's, it's a minimal standard, it's not a target.
Correct, right. And you have many intersections that are operating well above a D. Okay, so the current methodology for, for concurrency, we, the current model, the one that we have not updated yet, so the one that's being used right now to approve development, is calibrated to 2012 traffic volumes, and it goes out to a future year of 2030, so we've assumed a certain amount of development is occurring between when we updated it last in 2012 out to 2030. So the 2030 forecast, the land forecast, the development forecast include all your existing land use, that's on, on the street, on the ground today, and then at the time in 2012, there were a number of developments that were approved but had not yet been built. We had assumed all of that development was going to occur, and we knew all the details about it, where it is, and how much, and, so that was very defined. But then there was a level of land use that wasn't defined. So, some amount of land use that is part of your comp plan, part of the CIP growth that was approved, part of that was land use that was anticipated in the city, but we really don't know exactly where it's going to go, and exactly what it's going to be, but there are assumptions on it, right? And targets that we're trying to meet for PSRC and all that. So that's, that's sort of that future unidentified land use, and it's, it's all consistent with your comp plan. So all of that gets built into our modeling efforts, we know, you know, all that land use, and, and that's part of what predicts or generates traffic in the city and becomes part of our modeling effort. We also go outside the city, so the model that we use for the city is well beyond the city limits, so it includes almost half of Semamish, it includes a big chunk of Bellevue, big chunks of King County, so we've got lots of other, you know, land use and development within, anything that might have a real impact on Issaquah, we've got within the model. And then outside of that, at the model windows, are trips that leave the model, you know, traffic that leaves the model, and of course, we have to be consistent with the region, and that is, we get that from the PSRC regional model. So we make sure that we are consistent with, if PSRC is predicting, you know, 10,000 cars coming in at a certain point within our model window, we make sure we match that number. Okay, so we're very consistent with land use assumptions outside of Issaquah. Our model is for PMP tower only, and, and has been since its inception, so we do assume a certain amount of traffic in the city is going to use other modes of transportation, so that's that 10% increase in mode split over what is occurring today. Sounds like we're going to have a question about that.
Yeah, this is for staff, I would think. Are we measuring this? This was a critical, I remember this conversation those years ago, when we adopted the current concurrency model, when we selected, yes, let's assume a 10% in mode split, an increase over current. So it's very aspirational. Do we have a, are we at all collecting, measuring, status update? Show me the dashboard.
Do you want me to attempt to answer that, guys?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's all right.
That's great.
That's all right. I, I mean, I'm going to assume that the city is not collecting. It's very hard to collect that information, very costly. The way it is collected, though, in the region is through the census, so the census that occurs every 10 years, and then through individual surveys, and PSRC usually does those travel mode surveys, and they collect it for the entire region. And then we, like, when we did this update last go-around, we obtained the data for Issaquah that PSRC had collected at the time, and at that time we were showing, the PSRC data at that time was showing that the city was getting about 14% other modes, you know, other than a single occupant vehicle. And so that hap, it does, so as it, as it happens, the last update was 2012, 2013, this one's 2017, we have no new information, because we're in between surveys. So it won't be until the next round where we'll get sort of a, you know, in, a new piece of information that might help us define, boy, are we way off on that 10%, or, or what, so.
Thank you.
Hook to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
I didn't have an answer.
Okay, the current system looks at 80 different intersections in the city, and in general, those 80 intersections are defined by, if there's a signal there, it is part of our analysis, so we analyze it. There are some intersections that are part of that 80 that are not signalized today, but the anticipation is that over the next 20 years, they could possibly become signalized, and so we include those as, as part of the system. Again, I mentioned that we try and maintain a level of service D standard at each intersection. There are six exceptions that were approved with the last concurrency update, so six intersections, and I know the map might be really hard to see, but they're either red, or like an orangey-yellow in the, in the graphic, the locations where we have said at those intersections, we, for these reasons, we, either it's a regional problem that Issaquah doesn't feel like they need to fix, okay, this city shouldn't have to fix a regional problem, or there might have been environmental issues associated with an improvement at that intersection that just outweigh the benefits of trying to improve it, or there just might be public, you know, sort of objections to doing anything at those intersections, so.
The SR 900 I-90 eastbound ramp, so those, those lights are not owned and operated by the city?
By Issaquah, no.
And so there are, there may be others in the model that we don't have control over. So what do we do with that information? We, we, we still have a model, right? We still, your model still predicts what's going to happen there.
It does, and so when we're, when we go through this process, we actually do submit our information to WashDOT, for them to review and comment, and, you know, comment on. I would say last go-around, we got very few comments back from WashDOT. It is an opportunity, though, for us to use this information to then, you know, I don't know if lobby is the right word, but, you know, go back to WashDOT and say, hey, we need to look at a, a joint improvement along this corridor, or whatever. Okay?
All right, thank you.
You bet.
We're scheduled for 15 more minutes. We've got a potentially really long meeting tonight, so, just for all of us to be mindful of that.
Keep me paced. Okay, so back to the, the two-tiered model system, we have- We have the two tiers, and in, with each model, we are doing an existing condition analysis, so, and that is to determine what existing deficiencies occur in the city. So at the time, it was the 2012 model. We were, we were basically saying, what are the conditions in 2012 at this point in time? And you can see up there, at that point in time, we had four failing intersections. We do this step because, A, we want to make sure the model is calibrated to existing condition. We want to make sure that, because we build off of that model to do the future. And if the base model isn't right, the future model isn't going to be good. So that's where we start. It's also important because we cannot charge a fee, an impact fee, for existing deficiencies. So we can't go back and charge a developer for something that is, that is already a problem before they came in the door. Okay? Next step is then we add in all of the development that's been approved in the city but not yet on the street, so that it's not been built yet. So that's all in there, and at that point, so in 2012, when we did that step, we found that we had 29 failing intersections. And so clearly, not enough transportation improvements to mitigate all of the development that had approved, been approved in the city. And then the next step is to add in the extra growth and develop a list of transportation improvements that will bring us back into some sort of compliance. And at the time, what, what we decided was compliance was level service D except at the six intersections that I mentioned before. Okay? Sorry, I'm speeding up a little bit, so please, if something isn't going right or confusing, let me know. Okay, so in that graphic before, the difference between the concurrent growth and the future growth that has not yet been defined, that incremental growth is what pays for the set of transportation improvements that were identified between this step and this step. Okay, so to get from that 29 failing intersections down to the six, developed a set of improvements. They cost something, and we developed an impact fee that relates to the amount of growth, okay? So it was a per-trip fee. And as I mentioned before, as long as the proposed development that comes in the door for concurrency falls within the development locations where we assume development to occur, it's the same land use that we assumed, and it does not exceed the amount of growth that we assumed. As long as those three things are true, then the development is approved. But based on the number of trips they're going to generate, they pay a fee. And that starts to build the transportation system that was identified, okay? This came up, I, so I had a line here, there are cases where SEPA, an additional SEPA study is required, and we've already answered that for safety reasons, or maybe there's an access, a specific driveway issue that's, you know, needs to be studied. Okay, so for our set of updates this go around, we don't anticipate necessarily changing any policies. So we're, we're going with the same concurrency system that we have, so we're just doing a sort of a routine update. So I call that a technical update. It's mostly technical decisions that need to be made. I'm not coming to you and asking you to change a policy or a level of service standard or whatever. I'm just going with the current system that's in place and updating it with new traffic volumes, new development, et cetera, et cetera. So we did already collect traffic counts in 2016, and so those, at all those 80 intersections plus some, so those are all going to be used to update the existing conditions model to 2016. We calibrate the model to those conditions, so we make sure that we're, you know, we're showing congestion where it exists today, and if things have changed over the years, we make sure that that's all part of the calibration process. Is there a question? Oh, okay. And then in, during this process, we quantify land uses. So everything, anything that's occurred since 2012, 2013, we get the, the growth that's occurred. We identify regional growth outside the city, that's all updated. And, and then we continue with the comprehensive plan, growth targets that were used the last go around, unless anything has changed or been modified since then. This go around, I told you the last model was to 2030. This go around, we're going to forecast out to 2040. That's consistent with PSRC forecasts out to 2040. We're going to continue to only monitor the PMP tower, going to continue with that 10% increase in mode share, and going to continue to maintain the level of service D and those same six intersections. The assumption is that, you know, we have the flexibility to go to level service E or F. Of course, if it improves, that's great, right? But we won't get any worse than that. So same, oh, question?
Oh, wait, to the end.
Okay. So same process, develop the existing conditions, we do that concurrent development step, and then we identify transportation improvements. And really, that step of identifying transportation improvements is already defined for us. We already know what transportation improvements we approved last go around. So we're just testing at this point to make sure that's still consistent, still going to work for the city. So we're still going to be at level service D at those, at all the intersections except those six. So the question is, what happens if that doesn't occur? So if at the end of the process, we end up with, there's 10 intersections that are at E or F with our set of transportation improvements that we had assumed before. So you, at that point, it becomes no, no longer a technical issue. It becomes a visit back to you with some policy choices, and that, those are listed here. So the, I mean, in very generalized terms, you have the options of looking at additional improvements, so additional investment in your transportation system. You can reduce the amount of land use that you're going to allow to occur within the city, or we can look at that mode split issue. Or any combination of all three of those.
You say increased TIP investment, add projects, adds to the list.
Cost, which will increase the impact fee. Okay?
Like, just briefly, reduce land use growth, what's?
So you've got, you know, built into the model is the, is the amount of growth that you've assumed, and we've done a SEPA study, you know, and EIS for, for the CIP. If you decide you still want to do all that growth, but maybe not by 2040. So you, some amount of it will occur, but, but you're only going to allow a certain amount of it to occur by 2040 instead of all of it. That would be your, that, that would be an example of what to consider there. Okay? I think this is my last slide. So, so after we go through those three steps, we complete the model updates. We're going to, we definitely will come back to you one more time, no matter what, at least one more time, to go through the, the results of the analysis. And then at that point, we then, there's another consultant that actually does the impact fee calculations and whatnot, and there's a lot of interaction between the two of us that won't, it won't like, we won't get to a step and then start, it'll be very interactive along the way. But at some point, we're pretty much done, and then they take over and do, you know, the, the impact fee update.
What's the, the meet with council one more time? What's that?
So assuming that there are no policy decisions to be made, it will be, that one more time would be the, here's, here's the conditions, here's how it turned out, we're still at level service D, we're within those six, you know, failures, no big changes needed, everything's great. The other option is, we could come back and tell you, oops, we need to look at some options. And then at that point, I imagine there will be more than just the one meeting, because it's a policy issue at that point. So the hope is that we're not going to get to that.
Time frame?
So done with the whole thing by the end of the year, at, within like September, October timeframe, we were talking about that would be the interaction point with the impact fee consultant, where they would sort of start to develop and, and update impact fees.
So, so when we've been looking at some of our numbers of, of the growth that we've had recently, and, and PSRC, a lot of growth, and we're, we're getting really close to those numbers in a much shorter time period. How are you going to calculate that in? Because if we're still going to have growth, or we've got, you know, I'm trying to figure out, what you're, how are you going to predict the, the amount of growth when obviously, at this point in time, we're in accelerated timeframe throughout, purely sound? So, so how can you realistically get some numbers that are going to be there? It seems like it would be different than it was four years ago.
Right, and so, you know, last time, we assumed a 2030 timeframe and, and a certain amount of growth, right? The intent of this new concurrency system, before, we were going long stretches of time between updates. The intent of this system is to be much more frequent for that exact reason. If we're in an accelerated, you know, pattern, a lot more growth is coming in than what we, you know, than what we anticipated, it's still within the limits. We haven't approved development outside of what our, you know, total land use assumptions are, but it's happening a lot quicker. That's the intent of these updates, is to make sure we didn't get out of compliance, you know, we didn't go too far down the road without checking in, right? So, so we're, we are still going to assume this because there's no policy changes. So if we decided we wanted to allow more land use, that would be a whole different process. We'd have to come back to you with a, you know, plan of land use assumptions and changes, and what's different and all that. And that's not anticipated for this round. But like I said, at the end of this process, if things are out of whack, then that is an option moving forward, so.
Is that your question, or was yours more technical, like, how are you going to get updated numbers?
I am not going to assume any new growth outside of what we've already assumed before. So if, if you, if that's a question, if you want us to assume a faster rate over the whole period, that would exceed what you are currently approved to do within your own comp plan. And I would have to, that would be a totally different process. It may be confusing, but.
I hear what you're saying, yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, in the last, obviously, three or four years, it's, it's not been what was anticipated.
It's not a straight, it never is a straight line, right? I mean.
And so, so you've got a three or four-year period that our immediate history is telling us a different story than you would have looked at four years ago.
Right.
So how do you, how do you predict that? Because, you know, if you predict a slower growth rate than we're actually having, then our model won't work, and concurrency won't be working, right? So that, I mean, that's the point of it, is to make sure it's working, right? So how do we make sure that that is? Because at this point in time, you know, no one's seen any, you know, lowering that trend of, you know, pressure on development.
Right. I mean, so it, it never is straight line. It's, it is cyclical, and so at some point, it will probably dip back down again. Whether it, you know, whether we're, you know, over time, are we still going to meet that target at the end of the, you know, 2040, it is a question mark. We don't know that for sure, but that is the purpose of these very short, every three years, checking in to make sure. And so, like I said, at the end of this three-year period, which is right now, if it's out of whack, that's an opportunity for you to change your policy decisions, and maybe it's not. So then we go another three years, and then that's your time to, again, reassess and decide what to do. And maybe at that point, you've started to dip back down again, who knows?
So just follow, so we're in a moratorium for some various reasons that we've, we've looked at. And if we have a requirement to have things done within six years, and you're looking at a 20-year timeframe, and everything happens in the first five years, you're, you know, you're not going to make that six-year mark. You're just, so that's, I'm trying to look at. I think I get another question.
I don't know if my question is the same or a variation of Bill's, or I'm just saying it differently. And I'm wondering if it's the same question. So we have an assumption about the growth that we're going to have over a certain long period of time. And what I heard in Bill's question, and maybe, I don't know if I'm right or not, is we've, you know, you taught, you said it's not a straight line, but what's happened in the last three years is that it, it, it's been very rapid. And so does your model capture the actual growth that we've gotten in the last?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Is that your question?
You know that, the, I'll just put the graphic up, the, this graphic.
And the growth that we know is coming.
This middle, right here, is where I rectify, I sort of, this is where I put in the growth that's all been approved in the last three years. So if it has been at an accelerated rate, this is the step where I've identified, have we kept pace?
We can't hear, we can't hear you in the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have, that, that middle step is, is identifying, have we kept pace? So are we, even though it's been accelerated, have we been building transportation improvements also at an accelerated rate in order to, to fit that gap, to meet that gap, okay?
Is that your question? Do we actually capture? Okay.
That's part of it.
Okay.
The assumption of just the moratorium for a while, and that's going to put in an artificial, you know, when you're looking at what's been approved, there's going to be an artificial.
Dip, dip.
Yep. There. And how do we, you know, because there's going to be another artificial rise when that's changed.
When suddenly the gates are opened again.
Exactly. So how you, I just want to make sure you're accounting for all those, those variables.
You bet.
Is there room in the model to assume for projects that we're fairly confident are coming, even if they're not permitted yet?
Right, if, and that's working with the city staff.
Okay.
So if they know of things that are coming, that aren't necessarily officially in the door, but we know they're sort of coming, we are definitely talking about those things, yeah.
Two questions. A moment ago, you said the word target. What, what was that target you were referring to?
I may, it may have been like PSRC targets for land use growth in the city.
Well, it was, it was something about a forecast, whether it would be, you know.
It's probably land use that I was referring to. So you've got land use targets in your comp plan assumptions for, for Issaquah, and that, and it's probably what I was referring to when I said target. So that's built into your land use assumptions for, for Issaquah. So you may have a target of getting to X amount of residential units within, yeah.
Right. And, okay, that's.
Those are assumed in the, part of, part of the process.
This is going to be fascinating. My second question then is, you, you said we're, the time horizon, three or four years ago, was 2030.
Right.
You're going to do this for 2040. Now, we don't have targets for beyond 2031.
The, so the, the last go around, I would, if you asked anybody, any, any staff member or even myself, whether that growth could occur by 2030, I think most people would say there's no way all of that growth could occur by 2030, that, that was assumed in the comp plan. There is, I mean, there's always chances that it could, but there is a lot of residential development assumed to occur within the central Issaquah sub-area plan.
Yes.
And.
Okay, so thank you. You're actually, that, that's a, that's a good point, because I think when Bill was asking his questions earlier, and what you said, and when, as soon as you said PSRC, I wasn't really sure if you were talking about the, the population targets that we get from King County that fall out of the OFM work. I, I think that's what you were referring to.
That is part of the, we need to at least make sure that our growth includes that at a bare minimum. That has to be, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, you were referring, then, but then you said PSRC, and because we are a regional center, we actually have a capacity in the central area, which is a, separate from the targets that we get from the county that come from OFM. So you're including all of those.
All of that.
So it's full capacity.
Yes, we are assuming the full amount of development in order to meet those regional center targets.
You're assuming build out to the full capacity.
Yes.
Of the land use.
Yes.
So there's, there's, okay. All right, thank you.
Zoning, what zoning allows?
Well, zoning should be consistent with the, with the land use targets, yeah. It is a different question, but.
Yeah. Not sure. That's the same. I think the zoning allows more.
It may, you're right, it may.
More growth than, than targets.
So maybe I meant that by when I said capacity.
Right.
Capacity is.
So which.
And, and if zoning allows more, but we've reached the target, that's an issue. We, we wouldn't, through this system, we wouldn't approve development above the target, even if zoning allowed for it, because we haven't identified a transportation set of improvements that would allow that additional growth to occur. Does that make sense? At, when we've reached our growth limits that are built into this model, we can't continue to allow development to occur.
So that's the mind bender.
And that's, well, I mean, it's a SEPA issue. It goes back to, okay, if you want to go above that, then they have to do an EIS, a SEPA analysis, and the development does.
So the, the capacity that Torsten's talking about in central Issaquah is built on the planned action EIS, right? So that generated a certain amount of trips for both commercial and residential that can happen within central Issaquah. So think of it as a bank. And as development happens, it uses those trips as they pay their impact fees to do the transportation projects we've identified. If we get to the point where the bank is empty, and the next project comes in the door, it doesn't stop. It just means that its environmental impacts have not been reviewed, and they have to go through either their own environmental review that's beyond what's going on now with development, which is just safety improvements, it's capacity improvements, or the next round of planned action EISs need to be done to get to that next ledge and create, and fill the bank back up. Does that help?
Actually, my, I was in a different place.
Okay.
I wonder if Torsten understands that the city of Issaquah, in terms of dwelling units, is already at, and, and, or by 2018, or even now, will have the number of dwelling. units to...
Meet our target.
Meet our 2031 target that we get from King County.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I understood that also in 2012. You were very close or might have already been, yeah.
Okay. And then, but the regional growth center subarea that we have, or the central Issaquah area, and, and then the regional growth center in particular, has, if it was built, built out to full capacity, like an additional 7,000 dwelling units.
To what zoning allows.
Right. So I've been, so I, when I say capacity, that's what I've referred to.
Yes.
So I'm, so I'm not, your answer is earlier, I'm not really sure. So it sounds like you did know that we were very close to our county targets.
Right.
And now, the targets that were slated for 2031.
Yes. I did know that back then. I assume that's still the case now. I didn't know specifically whether it's the case now, but I knew back in 2012, you were either very close or already exceeded your targets at that time. We allowed additional above those targets as part of the CIP, and that additional is what's included in our modeling effort.
Okay. And it was your use of the word target that I was really wanting to understand.
That's confusing for you.
Because, because, yeah, we're using the word target specifically to be, refer to the county numbers that we have.
Okay.
And the, and the central area, and the regional growth center hat is zoned for additional capacity, and it's, it's above and beyond the targets.
Mm-hmm.
And you, but you were using the word target to describe that additional zoning capacity as well.
Okay. My apologies.
I, I think. I don't want to put words in your mouth. Just, that way, I'm just trying to understand. Make sure I understood what you're saying.
Yeah, so you're making statements, and I want to make, I want it as a question. And that is, yeah. So, and I, and I, and so I didn't know if you were specifically asking the question, Paul.
Well, as I said, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I, that was, I was just trying to think it through. Is that a correct statement?
It is a correct statement.
Thank you.
The targets are subset of the amount of land use that's included, and we've, we have much more land use than the target.
So does, so does the update include, do the, do the, does the modeling include our, what Paul's referred to as our total capacity, what I've called what zoning allows?
Okay, so again...
All right, and...
You, you've approved a, a certain amount of development that is part of the CIP, and it is above the target limit.
Oh, in the planned action.
But zoning may allow even more than that.
Okay, okay, clear.
Yeah, okay.
So...
We, we're...
There's potentially that difference.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Got it.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item, Agenda Bill 7250, Transportation Benefit District.
So Alice is our bond counsel and has been working with us for several years. So as you recall, the council put a ballot initiative on for transportation last year, which had majority approval, about 55% of the community supported that, but unfortunately, they needed the 60% to hit the threshold in that process to proceed with issuing the bonds. And so that still leaves us with the question, and we've talked about it in budget deliberations before, that we, other than what we just talked about, which is developers paying their fair share for growth and transportation improvements, the city doesn't have a means to effectively pay for transportation improvements that are responsible to the taxpayers within the city, kind of going forward. And so we've been looking at options and alternatives. We've had several conversations at the ad hoc long-term finance committee to look at that. And so one of the things that the administration believes could be an effective means to pay for transportation improvements is the Transportation Benefit District. And so we want to invite Allison to talk about TBDs and how they work. There has been conversations from time to time on other means that, you know, that TBDs can accomplish, like tolls have been brought up from time to time, and TBDs enable you to do that. So we wanted to kind of go through and have a conversation with the council about transportation benefit districts, how they work, and see where, you know, council may want to give us some direction on that.
Hi, welcome.
Great, thank you. Glad to be here. Let's see, so I think that was a pretty good introduction. I was just going to cover really kind of the basics of what are transportation benefit districts or TBDs, the 2015 authorization that allows a city to sort of form one and then absorb it. I'll talk a little bit about that. And some of the revenue tools that a transportation benefit district can bring. And so if you have any questions or want to stop me anyway, anywhere along the way, just feel free to chime in. So first of all, TBDs are originally designed to be a separate, sort of quasi-municipal, independent taxing district within the city boundaries, or you can draw other boundaries if you like. And as the statute was originally envisioned, a city, typically, the city council would kind of put on a separate hat and become the governing board of the transportation benefit district. The purpose for which you can form a TBD is really to fund a transportation improvement, and that's got a definition. But really, I think it's been expanded, as it's been amended over the last several years, to include anything that's really in a transportation plan, including the city's own transportation plan. It could also point to a regional transportation plan. And it can include state highways, regional arterials, public transit, high-capacity transportation, and other transportations of regional or statewide significant, transportation projects and programs of regional or statewide significance. It also can provide funding for not just the capital improvement, but also for the operation and preservation and maintenance of the facilities. And that's been a, a big deal for a lot of cities who have used this, because they've used their TBDs to generate money just to repair and upkeep and do maintenance on their roads, which is, you know, a place where it's been difficult to find cash that's dedicated for that. In addition, to go with the concurrency discussion, anything that's a transportation improvement, as defined here, also has to be consistent with your plans, and is supposed to be something that's necessitated by reasonably foreseeable congestion levels. So forming a TBD, I'll go really quick, kind of through the basics of kind of the mechanics of how this works. Forming a TBD is very simple. It does not require a public vote. It does require a public hearing. So you need to publish notice, hold a hearing, hear all persons who are affected by it, and then following that public hearing, adopt an ordinance, finding that it's in the public interest to create the TBD, you establish the boundaries. Again, most cities do it with their entire city boundaries in mind. And it's important to think about, when you're establishing it, you really need to define what those transportation improvements are. And they can be defined somewhat flexibly to point to, again, to point to a plan, but you do need to think about what those are, because that's what you're going to be limited to. Whatever you kind of published in the notice and in the initial ordinance is really the scope of what the TBD can fund.
Question on that.
Yeah.
So as a city, would we have any authority to make a larger TBD than the city boundary?
Uh...
Able to go outside of that?
Not with, you can have one that is larger than the city, but you do need to have the county or the neighboring jurisdiction approve it. And if you do that step, then you have to have a little more complicated governing structure, and it also precludes you from just absorbing those powers. But it, it can be done, but you do need the cooperation of the other governing bodies.
And still without a vote, but just be, between the other governing bodies could also just put that into...
Correct. You would need an inter-local agreement to form that and, and create a, a sort of regional TBD.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that, that's kind of then going to the second step, and, and I would say that most TBDs that are being formed now, and even most of the ones that were formed over the last five years, are being converted to this, where the city just kind of assumes the powers. And I think that's mostly an administrative ease, because it's a little bit complicated to sort of notice and hold separate meetings and duplicative of, you know, sort of staffing, time, and things like that, and to remind council members when they're wearing the hat of, I actually had one city where the city attorney would bring in construction hats and make a city council members wear them or put them in front of them to remind them that they're in the TBD role rather than the city role. So as of 2015, we have a new statute that allows a city just to assume those powers of a TBD. And again, it's a simple process that does not require a public vote, does require a public hearing. You adopt an intent ordinance, publish notice of the hearing, hold the hearing, and then, again, upon a finding that it's going to be in the public interest, you go ahead and adopt another ordinance that assumes the powers and functions of the TBD. It's a pretty straightforward and simple process. I would recommend that those two actions not occur at the same meeting or the same public hearings, that there be some space and a separate consideration of the formation of the TBD from the assumption. Finally, just a couple other requirements on the TBD, just to be aware of. Statute does require that you adopt a material change policy, so that if there's deviation from that original project list and your sort of original transportation plans, that you have a, a policy that describes how you will go about making those changes, including having public hearing. If you have gotten, and I haven't gotten to the funding section, but if you've got voter-approved taxes, fees, charges, tolls, you may need to go back and have another vote if there's going to be a significant change from what was approved by the voters for those, if there's an increase in those taxes, fees, charges, or tolls. In addition, if, if there's a change in cost of a transportation improvement that was approved as part of the plan that exceeds 20%, there is a public hearing requirement. Statute also requires an annual report once you form a TBD, so updating the public. And then finally, there's a bunch of actually new sort of bars, manual updates, and things like that, for how the city does record-keeping and financial record-keeping between the city and the TBD and cities that have assumed TBDs. And those are all within the last bars update. So this is a, a topic of intense scrutiny by the auditor, how these are working, so. So those are the, the basic formation steps. I went through those pretty quickly, but they're pretty straightforward. I think the meat of what you really want to know about is where's the money come from and why would we form a TBD? So the TBD offers a couple of financing resources that are not available to cities, and the non-voted options are a vehicle, vehicle license fee or impact fees. And I won't talk about impact fees, because a TBD doesn't give you anything new. It allows you to, to impose an impact fee, but it nets against the city's impact fee. So it's, it's not a, it's not something useful here. Vehicle license fees, car tabs. In a TBD, you can do a $20 vehicle license fee. If you've had the $20 in place for two years, you can go up to $40. If you've had $40 in place, there's certain conditions under which you can go up to $50. So that's the vehicle license fee. All of the other additional revenue options require simple majority voter approval. And those include a sales tax, tolls, you may do tolling. I, I wrote up here, city road tolls. You also, with legislative approval, meaning the state legislature, can toll state, state routes. Property taxes, if they're voted. So I'm going to put that one aside. It's one that has not been used by any existing TBD. And I think we, we in the bond community have a little question on the separateness of a governmental entity governed by the, by the city council members wearing different hats. Now, I think the rule would change a little bit, the analysis would change a little bit if you assumed the functions and powers of the TBD, but we haven't really gone down that road yet with anyone. So that's kind of a new question. But it, it's out there in statute. So, and then, lastly, with the TBD, you can also do a local improvement district, but again, it's an area where I think the city's powers are much more robust in that, in that field. And so I wouldn't necessarily recommend that the TBD, you know, pursuing the TBD route for an LID. So questions on the overview? Yes?
Actually, that's not... That last part isn't clear to me. You, in your outline, you have the subbullets, non-voted options, and then options requiring voter approval.
Right.
What's an LID?
Okay, so local...
Because I know about an LID, but not in the context of a TBD.
So the TBD statutes simply point you to the city statutes and allow a TBD to exercise the powers that a city would in creating an LID. So it doesn't, it, it's, it's not an additional power of any sort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So really, the new financing sources are those in the top bullet set. And lastly, debt issuance, again, along the lines of the property tax, hasn't really been used. Yes?
So you said non-voted, you know, but under non-voted, you can only do a vehicle fee. So if you want to do more than that, you have to have, you have to just go to a vote.
Simple majority voter approval, yes. Simple majority voter approval. Ballot title, the proposition must describe, again, what are those transportation improvements that you're funding? A rebate program, but it only applies to cities over $500,000. And then what the proposed taxes, fees, charges, or the range of tolls might be. So those are the elements you would need to include in the ballot title. And I think at that point, I think that's pretty much all the slides I had prepared. So I was hoping to be able to just answer questions you might have about a transportation benefit district, why it might be a good idea, what the pitfalls are, anything else that you would need to know.
Those are two good questions to start with. And then I had one about the tolling.
Okay. You know, I think the reason that most cities do a TBD is because they do have access to that vehicle license fee and the sales tax. Those are the two most popular ones that people use. I've seen many of them used, like I said, for, you know, the, the sort of maintenance, the deferred maintenance on their roads and those kinds of things. It can be used for a much broader range, but that seems to be the target, simply because those are the unpopular ones. If you, if you do do, propose a bond issue, nobody wants to pay for, well, you can't use a bond issue to pay for opera, you know, sort of routine maintenance. People typically do the bond issue for the big sexy project, the project that is going to make a very visible impact. And then they use the things that are the vehicle license fees or, or the, the less visible types of fees and charges to pay for the stuff. People don't, people ignore, you know, the maintenance of the roadways and that sort of thing. So those are the main ways I've seen the TBDs being used. I would say, like I said, most of the TBDs I've seen recently are being converted into city powers. And so people are dropping the, the separate entity designation. I think a good reason to keep a separate entity would be if you want boundaries that are different than the city's, either larger or smaller. You could target a TBD around a particular area, such as the downtown area. You could get into an inter-local agreement with the county or near, or Sammamish or Bellevue or one of your neighboring cities to create a larger one. Those would be good reasons to keep it. Otherwise, I would say that the biggest pitfall with TBDs is not observing those formalities of having separate entities. Right. And that, I think, it's a, it's mostly an administrative issue for most cities, to, to keep those things separate, to have separate sets of financial records, you know, and to really sort of remember that there's separate municipal corporations. And frankly, most cities make the calculation that it's not worth it to keep them separate.
I have a question about city road tolls.
Yeah.
You said that that's possible.
Yeah, it is.
So can you talk a little bit about that statute and what's required and what the parameters are?
Yeah. So with a TBD, you may impose tolls on city streets. As I said, with additional legislative approval, you can do state routes. If it is on just city streets, and there is any impact on a state facility, then the rate, the toll rate must also be approved by the state transportation committee, the commission. And any changes in those rates need to be approved there. But other than that, you know, the city would collect the tolls and administer it. If it's on a state route, all of that runs through department transportation. In order to approve the tolls, you do need, like I said, that simple majority voter approval, and you need to propose to the voters the range of the tolls that may be proposed over the timeframe that you kind of put into that.
Other, other than rate approval, does the state have the authority to tell a city that they... they can or cannot do a toll?
Can or cannot do it. I will candidly say that the statute is there. I know of no city that has actually approved or used the tolling authority here. But the statute is clear that a city exercising those TBD powers would have the ability to impose it just on those city streets.
I just find it interesting, though.
Mm-hmm. It's an interesting statute. I'm not sure as a practicality whether there are city streets where it works, but maybe there are some here where it's possible.
Questions?
So, just to be clear. So without a vote of the people, the only thing you can really do is a $20 tab fee.
Yep.
Right? And I don't know how many cars we have in Issaquah, 30-some thousand people. We got less than that number of cars. So 20,000 at 20 a head, that's what, 400,000 a year, maybe. It's not a lot of money towards a $9 million or $90 million project, right? So that's, I'm just, so that. So then, if you want to do something else, such as a property tax or something. Because the list you gave us of other cities that have done this, that's basically all I see that anybody outside of Seattle has done a $20 fee.
The $20 fee, you can do a larger fee with a vote. Or, like I said, if you've had the $20 fee for two years, you can go to 40, and after that, you can go up to 50 after two more years. So over five years, you could phase it in. And the sales tax. There are several cities that have done the TBD sales tax.
Okay. Of your list of the local ones, there's none outside of Seattle. There are probably some other ones, but you gave us a list of about a dozen here, and none of them outside of Seattle have a sales tax, according to the list.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, Tim tried twice and failed, is what I saw. It's in the packet on page 32 of 462.
Let's see here. I'll take a quick look. Yeah. There's certainly more TBD. This is just King County.
Yeah, this is the local ones I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
Could be in Pennsylvania or wherever, right?
Yeah, well, no, no.
100 cities you're talking about.
Bainbridge Island, for example. You know, I know of several that have, that are within the Puget Sound area, just not within King County.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So the 100 you referred to in this are within the state of Washington?
Yes. TBD is just a state of Washington. It's a state statute.
Oh, okay.
Can the administration kind of then fill in the other part of the story a little bit more? Put this in context for us, why we're even having this conversation?
So, as we talked a little bit about at the beginning, we still have very significant transportation projects that we need to get done in the community, and we don't have a funding source to pay for those improvements. And so one of the things we've looked at was the, since the failure of the bond proposal last year, was looking at a sales tax under a TBD and utilizing the sales tax measure, assuming a simple majority, which we received last time on that vote, you know, at that rate would generate about $2 million a year. Now, that's still not, that doesn't get us to 50 million, which is what was, you know, proposed last time over the life of that time period. Because I think there's a period of time you have to get it renewed, right?
Yeah, I think it's an every 10-year. I'd have to double-check.
Yeah. And so that's really, one of the things we looked at is, okay, if we're going to get those major improvements done, then we need to look at a means to pay for those. And so this is one of the things that we looked at. The other benefit of it is, obviously, sales taxes are paid for outside just the city base. So you've got individuals that live in other communities that are also going to be contributing, that shop here, to pay for those improvements versus property taxes. They're only locally, you know, those individuals who live in the community are paying 100% of the cost of those improvements. So, you know, the vehicle fee doesn't generate a lot. I think the last time we looked at it was like $300,000 or $400,000 a year. And as Al said, it really just covers kind of, you know, maybe complete streets or, you know, what we typically pay for in terms of a small investment annually. But there aren't, other than doing a major, you know, property tax bond, there aren't good means that would generate sufficient revenue to pay for some major projects that we still need to get done in the community.
You didn't mention what that percent of the sales tax you're looking at.
It's, I should know, I think two tenths of 1%.
That's 1%. Thank you.
So this, not cutting questions off, but I saw there was a lull here. So this is scheduled to go to infrastructure. Additional conversation. Everybody knows that. So I wasn't going to take public comment on this item tonight because it's going to committee. Have other questions?
So I guess, as chair of that committee, I would just like to pause there, but any particular comments from the two of you who aren't on that committee that you could give me now would be much appreciated, your thoughts or comments.
I don't have any for you right now.
Thank you.
Yells? Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item, district visions. This is regarding a development moratorium. And several people here for a presentation. So I will just say that the next three items, the final three items on the agenda, they're all coming back and have opportunities at the various opportunities for public comment. So we have a long agenda tonight, so I probably won't, am not going to call for public comment tonight. Okay. Unless you have other ideas. Well, strongly, one way or the other. Because we could be here really late. Okay, so we're setting up for visions. We had a request via email for some maps. Are these the maps? Okay. Excellent.
These are those maps.
Okay.
These are the requests.
All right.
And our emails are not functioning well.
All right, that's good. I see. Good.
Can anyone add that, probably grab one up in the chair? Does that one work?
This one is the only function.
Which is the most fun map?
This is the most fun map.
Wait, wait, wait. Because anytime someone, yeah, hang on.
All right.
Can you move the whole?
So maybe we should start the presentation, and then we can still fiddle with maps.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right. So we're here to talk to you about the district visions moratorium work plan item.
You are?
My name is, thank you. My name is Jennifer Woods, and I'm with Development Services. So we'll start our presentation. So on the agenda, we've got four questions that we'd like to answer with information as we go throughout the presentation. The first one is, what are we doing? So this is, why are we, why is this a moratorium work plan item? Why was it put in the work plan? So we're evaluating, I'm sorry, Stacy?
It's a status tonight, a status report, sort of?
It's a status report. It's also a where are we going report.
Okay.
And it's also a, let's have a conversation about where we're going with you. So for the moratorium work plan, this particular item, we're evaluating how projects both planned and developed in Central Issaquah meet the vision in the neighborhoods and also the overall overriding vision for Central Issaquah. So what have we done to this point? We've conducted lots of public outreach. We've had some public meetings. There's a whole slide about all the public outreach that we've done coming up. What do we know now? We've gathered lots of feedback. We have some examples on the following slides of the feedback that we've collected. One thing that we've found is, it isn't always the vision that's lacking in terms of language or direction. Sometimes, it's the implementation tools that are not as strong as perhaps we would like them to be. So, for instance, the vision informs the requirements. So the stronger language in the vision, the more strong the requirements would be for a particular subject. And so what's left to do? So based on the feedback, we need to do some adjustments to our visions in the plan. And there may also be some other intersections, things that have come up that we're not going to be able to do with the vision update, but they may be more related to implementation. So they may be more standards-based. Or they may be an intersection with a capital improvements project or another road project that we're doing, for instance. So with that, we'll go into the questions that we discussed with the community at various points. So the question, do we need to update the visions in the neighborhood? Yep. Do we need more specific descriptions? Are there things that we missed? Or are there new things that have popped in since we did the original plan? Yes. Does the vision for Central Issaquah need updating? Yeah. There were some overarching things that we found as part of our outreach that we need to add to the overall vision for Central Issaquah. And do the boundaries need to change? And the answer was no, from the feedback that we got. We posed some questions about boundaries, but nobody really had any, there wasn't any big comments for boundary changes, just a few comments for boundary changes. So just as a kind of refresher, here are our neighborhoods. In Central Issaquah, there are 10 neighborhoods throughout the plan area. And those are the neighborhoods that we discussed with the community, and they're different visions. So here's a list of the public outreach and the dates that we did them, but very generally, February, March, we reached out to business and property owners. Those were our focus groups for each of the districts. We had a PPC open house and a Central Issaquah Plan Task Force reunion, both of which were public meetings where we were able to discuss and have very open conversations with the public. Some of the boards that you see came from the PPC meeting, trying to get some initial feedback, some initial information from the community about kind of where to start this. And the community meetings we had were, one was at Atlas and one was at the Pickering Barn. So we tried to do one north of I-90 for the community and south of I-90. And we mailed out almost 1,000 postcards to residents within Central Issaquah to try and get them to come to these community meetings as well. So some of these topics on this slide are actually in the plan right now, and a couple of them are new. And they were new based on feedback that we got from the community. So primary uses, key environmental features, green necklace in parks, green necklace we really kind of brought to the surface because it was embedded into parks. Yes, Paul?
I'm sorry, I should have asked this on the previous screen. You said 10. You listed seven.
In the focus groups.
Yeah, so why were, just a word about why the three districts and/or neighborhoods, whatever we're calling them, were excluded?
They weren't purposefully excluded. There were invitations sent out. We just didn't have any fish biting, so to speak. So nobody actually RSVP'd for the meetings that we had for the districts that aren't represented under the focus groups. We were able to, with the exception of one, which is Hyla, which is in the Raleigh Development Agreement area.
So it was the Western Gateway and what was the other one?
The Western Gateway, Hyla, and
Darst, Darst Park.
Darst. So, but we did receive, so that was business and property owners, but we received a lot of other public comment for those districts as well.
And we ended up, just really quick, we ended up emailing the folks that couldn't come to the focus groups, and we asked them questions through email because they weren't able to come at any of the times that we were trying to have the focus groups. So we actually did get comments on all of them, but they weren't official focus groups. So that was a really good question. We should have mentioned that.
Thank you.
All right. So the two new pieces that we asked about were placemaking and boundaries. And as I alluded to a little earlier, boundaries wasn't as big of an issue as we found. But placemaking was huge. That was probably one of the biggest repeat thoughts and comments that we got from the public was, we need a place, we need a place, we need a place. And it was throughout every neighborhood that that was, that comment was raised. So here's a sample of public comments that we received for two neighborhoods. As you can see, one's very heavy in terms of the comments we received from it, and the other one, not so much. Gilman has a lot more public visibility and a community use, so that could be one reason why. But this is an example of what kind of comments we got for these two districts. So I'll let those kind of sit for just a second, and then we'll move on to... So this is the actual vision for Gilman. And the comments that you just saw on the previous slide are actually listed under opportunities for refinement. So this is how we're trying, we're trying to put the comments that we've received in the vision in the appropriate places. So this is how the vision starts out. These are the opportunities for refinement. And the next few slides are going to be samples. And I just want to preface that the language in the samples is a work in progress. So it's not, we're not proposing the language tonight, but it's to give you the flavor of how we plan on incorporating the public comments that we've received. So here's the updated vision for Gilman. Like I said, it's a sample, a work in process. But we would amend, say, the primary uses in architectural style, where we've heard comments relating to those things. And if there are things about the actual vision that aren't quite in line with the comments that we've heard, those are actually the changes that we would be making. And it would look similar to this, not the words, but in terms of the legislative edits and how we would update it. And so these are all the pieces. Primary uses would be first, key environmental features, green necklace in parks, mobility and connections. There were a lot of neighborhoods that had connectivity as a major issue. So you'll probably see a lot of things on connections in the update. And placemaking is brand new, so everything about placemaking in each neighborhood is going to be new to the plan. And Kristin's going to start with the actual, the big overall vision and the guiding principles for that.
Hi, I'm Kristin Lee, and I'm also with Development Services. So what you see here are the Central Issaquah vision and guiding principles for all of Central Issaquah, not for the individual districts. This is what our original visions for the neighborhoods were based on, as well as the goals and policies that you see in the plans now. So our current vision is guide the evolution of Central Issaquah from a place known primarily for strip malls and office buildings into a more cohesive neighborhood that is widely recognized as a vibrant and livable town center by. Then we have environment and integrate environmental features into the built environment, preserve what we have. Housing, add a variety of housing, types of housing, and affordability of housing for all people at all stages of life. Sense of community, create a sense of place, create architectural design, integrate development with the natural setting, create new public spaces, parks, plazas, and streetscapes. Transportation, make sure that we have a wide variety of mobility options. Economic vitality, expand on what we have already, excuse me, expand on all of the amenities that we have existing now. And innovation, employ innovative approaches for economic development and growth management, such as become a regional growth center, such as apply for grants, partner with Arch, partner with other groups to find funding and resources to make this happen. What we found, as Jennifer mentioned, is that people weren't just necessarily thinking by district. They were thinking broader picture, which is great. And one And one of the things that's happened since we did Central Issaquah was that ST3 passed. So now there's a big focus on I-90. And where's that transit center going to go? Where's Light Rail going to go? So that came up over and over again, as did pedestrian crossings over I-90. And pedestrian crossings over Newport. And every single one of these said over, so we're assuming over, unless we hear otherwise. Issaquah Creek Corridor Trail, we initially had it from Gilman South, and people said, no, 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 we want to make sure that it's cohesive all the way through Central Issaquah. More local transit, which is something that we're working on now, and pedestrian-friendly Gilman, which moves through four different districts. So we included that one as well. So while we had originally talked about just revising the neighborhood visions, we're now proposing to add the entire Central Issaquah vision to that as well. So Jennifer also mentioned that really we asked, do the boundaries need to change? And people said no, but a few things came up, and since the question was asked, we thought we'd show just a few of the discussions that were had. One was Mammoth Park, and is it, should it really be its own neighborhood? Or do you include it in, say, part of Pickering, because it is part of the urban core? Another one was Gilman, and a few things came up there. One was you've got the Target, the Commons and the Target store right there that could be included as part of the urban core, that district that actually includes three different kind of distinct areas. You have the MUR, you have Target, which is part of the urban core, and then you have the area in the middle. So it just, that came up a couple of times. And then Old Route 10, some people said, why isn't that part of Old Town? So we just thought we'd show you some of the conversations that were had. So Jennifer talked about the public outreach.
Yes?
So I, I was just going to ask with Old Route 10, and I'm not sure that that would cover it. So nothing came up about sort of the corner where, over by XXX and that whole area? I know that was something we had discussed.
Not just the corner itself, but maybe one person, maybe two, mentioned moving the entire Old Route 10 into Old Town. But nobody's parceled out parcels and said that these should move.
Weren't talking about certain areas of that of Old Route 10?
No.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So proposed next steps, we've done public outreach, we are here now. And our next step, if we are headed in the right direction, and you agree with what Jennifer showed you earlier in revising the visions based on what we've heard so far, is that we would start drafting those visions and then move on to PPC for public hearing and more meetings with them. I got the, I got the brief piece, so no questions.
Sure, I have some questions.
Sure.
So we had an email question. I've got questions from one of the council members who's not here, and then I have questions that came in email. District visions, one of the overarching themes that this community member heard was that only a few areas of the Central Issaquah Plan should be, area should be taller and more dense. The rest, four stories or less, and much smaller scale. This is, from this person's point of view, not so far represented. So how is that?
We heard it, we, what we tried to show here were common themes that we heard over and over again. We did hear it, we heard that height should go into the urban core. And where we heard the lower scale was primarily in the MUR. In fact, we noted that in one of the individual districts that's in the back end of this presentation, that they wanted single-use, low-story, low-scale, short, architecture to go there. But we just didn't hear it a lot, and we heard it for those two areas specifically, but not in a broader picture. Maybe we misheard, but that's what we recalled, and that's what our notes say, so.
Okay, so what would, what would a lot mean? I mean, what would it take, what, so what, what would it take, or what did it take? Or the number of comments or from people to get something revised as proposed revision?
How many times would you say? We, we, yes, we can certainly add it as an option. We
So I wasn't there, I don't know how many people, but that's
Right. And, and I'll say it was not an overwhelming, we didn't get huge turnouts. We did a lot for the businesses, that there was a pretty good showing there.
Okay.
We, yeah, but we can add it.
Okay. And apparently, maybe there was a lot about gateway area, that they need more parks. Is that information represented in the district visions?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I go on?
Okay. Did Costco and its local suppliers participate in the Pickering vision, so we can understand what makes that campus function better? And, and can we support that with code updates? So forget the last part, but did Costco
They did participate, yes.
Okay. How does the school district's desire to relocate their administration building affect district visioning, or did it?
It did not, we, I don't think we knew about it at the time, or we didn't. The redistrict, the relocation of the school district administrative buildings. It, it didn't, it didn't come up at all, we didn't know about it at the time.
Okay, so
The administrative buildings.
New place?
Oh, I'm sorry, Holly, I'm thinking, I went, I went straight to library, I apologize. It did not.
Okay, so it's a question about whether if they move and where they're moving to. Is it
Okay.
Potentially something that might need to be considered in the visioning? Besides what's desired in each district, are we considering what is not desiring, desired in each district? So that we can potentially change code?
It, we didn't hear, I'm thinking back through all the drawings, and we didn't hear a whole lot.
So I think, I think one of my pieces of feedback would be, just because we didn't hear it, I don't think, doesn't mean it's not a good idea. So, so we have had some
Right.
Development that uses, that some would say we didn't anticipate. I think that's where that question comes from.
Agreed, yeah.
How is Gilman Village protected? The community might want to keep it, but it is in an area where the owner might want to sell it to capitalize on the development capacity.
Right.
So is there, so how do we protect Gilman Village?
We had a conversation about it.
Pardon me?
We had a big conversation about it, but we can't protect it unless we buy it.
Yeah, the zoning is what's there, yeah, exactly.
The visioning should not be sort of a wish, they should be actionable and clear, but it's not clear that they're anything beyond kind of this is what we'd like them to be. But maybe that's where you were talking about
The land use regulations.
Visions, if you want, if you want the vision, then you have to have the corresponding code piece to go with it.
Correct, we need to, we need to make the visions beefier, so that we can expand on that in our land use regulations to make sure that that is implemented.
Was that a next piece after the visioning is done?
Yes.
Okay. Old Route 10, what is the vision for the two extra lanes of paving in the wide landscape median?
There is not one yet.
What?
There is not one yet. We do not have that, and it's not part of the Gilman streetscape.
Tibbetts Valley, how does this connect to Hyla? Where is the discussion of access across I-90 connecting two districts?
Could you repeat that one for me?
Let's see, Tibbetts Valley, how does this connect to Hyla? Where is the discussion, discussion of access across I-90 connecting two districts? Maybe those are two separate questions, not sure. Does that not make sense?
There's, right, so it's come up, it didn't come up, I think maybe it came up once in these discussions, having a bridge going over SR-900 to connect the two. That came up once. There's a lot of discussion about connecting the districts themselves, which is in the overall, we included that in the overall vision.
Okay, one more. Pickering. Does mixed use mean residential? And since Costco doesn't have any, where would it be? And should that, does that need to be addressed?
I think generally when people think of mixed use, it does include housing, but it doesn't have to be that way. Mixed use can also be retail on the bottom floor with office on top. So if that's something that we would want, then we would need to spell that out.
Okay.
That's all, thank you. Oh. Would you mind sending us?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Well, other questions?
So we, on your slide, for proposed next steps, we've got the public outreach and then the work session, and then the draft visions to the PPC. And then do those come back to another work session, or how would that work?
I don't have the schedule, I think they would come back to another work session with the drafts, as we have them. So they do come back.
A work session.
I just don't know when.
Okay.
Yes.
Is the Land and Shore, we get a calendar, we talk about, we have a standing moratorium item. Is that, Jen, you know the calendar I'm talking about? Is that online, do you know?
It is now.
It is?
As soon as it was official at Land and Shore.
It is now.
It is now, as soon as it went official at Land and Shore, we posted it online too.
Okay.
So it's on the moratorium webpage.
The answer to your question about the path for this and all of the moratorium items is on the website.
Okay.
Thank you. And then earlier, could you go back to the slide, Gilman updated vision?
Which?
Actually, keep going, one more. One more. Okay. And I'm just pulling this out as an example, I haven't really looked at all of the proposed new content. And I think that's what you're doing here, this, the strikeouts and the underlines are, it's just all proposed at this point.
Correct.
The primary uses architectural style, proposed language seems to describe what's there today. And, and the previous language I interpreted in the original plan to be more broad and aspirational, in, you know, what it's going to look like, what it's going to be decades from now. So that might sound like a subtle, well, it doesn't sound like a subtle difference to me, it just, it just, even the verb tense is present. North of Jupiter is. And this isn't a critique, but I'm just noticing the structural difference and the intentional, it seems to be the purpose of the previous statement and the proposed one seem to be different. This, this new one is describing what's there now. Was that, is that the intent, or what, what has changed?
Now, the intent is, and this is just a sample, and it was a, let's include what was in there. So it's, definitely has not been wordsmithed, but the intent was, in the future, north of Juniper is made up of this. In 20 years, this is what is there, and this is what it looks like, and this is how I get from point A to point B. So it can absolutely be reworded to say, we would like to see this, or in 20 years, we hope to have this, if that's what you all prefer.
Is there going to be a feedback loop with the original participants in any of the
They are receiving emails, I believe, on public meetings. And at all of our public meetings, we said, you know, if you want to hear more, let us know, and we'll email you about everything that comes up, so, yes.
Okay, then scroll down two more pages, please. So maybe this language was just there, you were filling space or what have you. Oh wait, is this the one? Wait, hold on, didn't mark it.
There are typos and whatnot, but again, but again, it's like you said, it's not proposed, this is just a work in progress.
Well, yeah, well, I'm trying to get, what direct, so what direction are we going with this? I mean, the one, the early one I pointed out, I thought was substantive, right? It was describing what's there, but that didn't seem right. And, but, and some of these get also very detailed.
Okay.
This is some pretty specific details that are there. So what is, I mean, and this one, I know now I wanted this one, it's, it's, it's a substantive change too. The existing language has a very specifically named Mall Street, has a core street that will become a pedestrian-only trail. I mean, that's very specific. Now, all of that's, that's gone. So I'm, I'm just trying to get in your heads a little bit, I'm trying to, I realize this is just proposed, but those are significant changes. And it, it feels like a complete rewrite. Maybe that's, maybe that's fine, but these are, those are significant changes.
Right. And we, we got different feedback this time than we got last time, so we're just trying to reflect the feedback that we've gotten. How detailed we get in these, I think we'll have to work through, because as we mentioned earlier, a lot of it will go into the standards.
All right, thank you.
So, so again, just clear on what, what you're looking for us now, you're kind of looking for a little bit of a head nod, I think, on, on where you're headed.
Correct.
Right, and, and it's hard because it's, it's a proposal, we didn't get any of the details. But I guess if I could give you anything I'm looking for, it's have these as strong as possible, using that public input and everywhere else you get it too, so that we can get those standards very clear and where we want them. So, so that's, my look is, is just, I want, mentioned before, the beef behind these so that we can then go and make the other things what we want and make them strong. So that's, I want to make sure you're going that way.
Okay. So along those lines and back to what Paul was saying, because I want to kind of see where he was going with it, but beefing it up and making them as strong as possible, are you looking for more detail so that we can be more specific in the land use regulations? Or you all, do you like the broader visions that we've had before? And here comes Keith.
I, I guess I would tend to use the word clarity versus beefiness.
So I think we're trying to strike a better balance. I think some of the criticism from the existing plan is that the visions are so broad, you don't know if you got it or not, right? And so it, it, there was a lot of, you know, is this off target? You know, and it's hard to tell based on the broad vision statements that are in the plan now. So I think part of the goal was to get as much clarity as we can, but to stay at a policy and vision level and not get all the way down into the standards and the mechanics, right? So what we're trying to do is we're trying to change the text to start to unfold and unpack those ideas. And at the end of the day, hopefully, we've got enough time to look through them and, and get them to read right, because right now, this is not intended to be a final outcome. But it's merely trying to show you the process that we're following to see if, if you feel like, at least from a procedural standpoint, we're on the right track, we're moving in the right direction. And I think the takeaway for you guys is, these are going to unpack dramatically from what they were. And how far down we go, I don't think we've decided yet.
And just to follow, that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I want them clear so that we get the, the following codes and everything else we need in place. And then you can look back and say, yes, we're there or we're not. I want that to happen, so whatever that takes, that's the support I have.
And as Keith said, we'll start unpacking that, and then the next time we come back, you can say, ooh, missed the mark, or nailed it. It's going to be nailed it, yeah.
So, so we're not here for head nods for substance, because you're not there yet.
We're getting there, correct.
Yeah, you're, this was a check-in to let, you know, let us know where you're at, where you're going from here, and if we have any feedback.
Correct.
And I think similar to what Bill has said, maybe a little bit different, is that I would like enough specificity in the, in the visioning, because that's our guiding document. But I would like enough specificity so that we can actually say, we can actually come up with code that gets us the vision. Because if it's too general, then we don't have anywhere to go. We don't, we don't have no code that we can draft that's going to get us where we want to go. If we just say, well, we'd like to make it an attractive area.
Right.
That doesn't work.
Right. Okay.
So I would just, I would echo those comments. I, I think that having some specifics in there to, so things can be better aligned. But if, if, what I understand, like when I'm looking at this particular example, perhaps, you know, calling out Mall Street was, was too specific. And that may or may not be the best option down the road. But to have enough specific language to where there's not confusion around But to have enough specific language to where there's not confusion around the intent. So I see that you're trying to, to kind of capture the best of both worlds there. And, and so I, I think it's off, I think it's off to a good start. And I'm glad we had this piece of the conversation because now it's making a little more sense. Because, you know, at first I was, I was sort of drawn to like, you know, we talked about Mall Street as the core street and Promenade Park and that kind of thing. So I think this is off to a good start.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
We'll see. Are they going to take them all the way? No, no, that's okay. Oh, we're taking them away. Do we, do you want to start or should we? Yeah. I can hear you.
Hey. Jen.
Evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're going to continue the discussion about the proposed financial management policy section. What I prepared on, starting on page 133 of tonight's agenda packet was a memo. And my attempt essentially is to give us a guideline in some of the, in the sections that are coming up of the important targets or objectives or principles or things that the administration would like the council to specifically address. Certainly, any language in the proposed policy is to be reworked if, if that is what is requested. What I wanted to do then, if, if that is an acceptable method for going through the rest of the policy, we do have some additional dates on the calendar for talking about the proposed policy. But what I'd like to do is to talk a little bit about the, where we were at with the introduction and the reserves section, the fund balance section, to give, give you a flavor of, of how this memo might serve as a guide going forward. So if that works for the council, then I would just want to bring your attention, and this is at the bottom of page 133 of the packet of the memo. There were some direction of edits for the overall policy objectives in the introductory section. And so once the, the final policy comes before the council for consideration, then those would be redlined so you could see specifically what had changed from the original proposed policy to the final proposed policy.
Okay.
There is, then the next section is the reserves. And what I wanted to provide for the council was a follow-up of an example of, of fund balance designations. And that was included with the memo as attachment A. So you could see essentially how a designation of fund balance often looks in that you take the, the total amount of the fund balance and then they, it might be chunked out into those difference, those different GASB authorized sections for assigned, unassigned, a non-spendable, restricted, committed. And so, or, for the, the example that I provided, just wanted to, to show you is that there may be a total amount for that fund, but.
And that's, is that the, the attachment A on page 139?
That's correct.
Okay.
So just provide that example. So if that was, if that was answering the, the request for an example of fund balance, then we can move on. Otherwise, I can answer any additional questions about how fund balance sometimes gets designated in those different buckets.
Questions? I don't know who asked for that. So this example. So I don't know if any, the person's here tonight who asked for it. That, that could be the case.
The, the next, was there a question?
Do you have a question?
No, I'm looking at my notes from the June meeting. And I, I definitely had something about that, but I need, go ahead and continue. I'll, I'll come back to it.
Another piece of information that I sent via separate email was some additional information about reserves, about the, the risk assessment to give the, the council some guidance as you looked at the risk, risk assessment. Also included, and so that, that email, that information was included in this packet as attachment B. So that's a duplicate of information that was provided to you. And attachment C is an example of a risk assessment completed. And I wanted to briefly go through that to see if there were any questions about how a risk assessment essentially is completed and quantified then to put that into a method with which we can say, we, we might set our target at a certain level. And in the example that I provided, you can see that the score from the risk factors in, from my perspective as the finance director, was at a 24. And so then there are some analytical guidance then that's provided to say that within, if your score was in this range and within that 17 to 24, is that essentially it may be a low to moderate level of risk. And there is an example or a suggested range of reserves that you might consider setting in your policy. So there are then some other impacts then that would be considered that are below. So you can follow along with the, the commitments or assignments that are, are in other perceptions. And so you would consider those commitments and assignments, perceptions, political support. And putting it all together then, on that second page of the numbering, brings you or adjusts your risk score down to essentially 21. And so that, then with the supporting then documentation for all of those risk factors from expenditures, revenues, leverage, capital, projects, all of those go into play. And that's how that worksheet is, is filled out.
So, um, do we have some homework?
Uh, yes, the council was.
So I'm sure I'm the only one who failed to complete the homework, right?
Right.
Okay.
No, I'm in the same group with you.
Okay, oh, good. We're all failures. Sorry. So can we have an extension of time?
Oh, absolutely. I wanted to tonight, to give an example because it is one of those things to, to see what someone else might be thinking, give you some ideas. But certainly you can, you can contact me if you, if you have any questions. But that's essentially, if you did not, or, or I know you get a lot of emails, I can certainly resend that. Because once you, you can plug in those numbers and it'll automatically calculate your score. You don't have to worry about tallying up your score or what have you. If you want to do that, then I will resend that out and.
Yes, please.
Try that again.
Otherwise, we'll all be searching, Jen.
No worries.
And it's summer.
It, it is.
Finally.
There's definitely a lot going on. All right. So if I'm, I'm moving on that now to the next page then. So the reserve section, we've still got some more work to do with regards to what is the reserve target for the general fund? What page is that? That's page 134 of the packet. At the top of the page then, what I, what I've done is, is these are the remainder kind of checklist items for the reserve fund balance section. So we'll work on the risk assessment worksheet. And so essentially then, we'll have a discussion then about setting the reserve target for the general fund. There are, the other funds that are proposed in the policy certainly are the utility enterprise fund. And so those would also be reserve targets that the new policy should set. There's also a reserve target for the REIT fund, which is intended to be a new special revenue fund. And then there are some internal service funds. And those are proposed targets that aren't necessarily aligned with a risk assessment like a general fund. You could do the risk assessment for each of those funds. But the general fund is somewhat unique. And so that's why we specifically use the risk assessment for the general fund.
So with each of these red text items?
Yes.
Are these the red, are these the, you're alerting us to the sections you're working on?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I specifically used red for the reserve section because it is, it is one of the more important sections. Typically gets a lot more consideration for that because it is such an important piece. It affects the financial model. It affects the budget. And certainly, all of these sections affect what we do in our financial management. I mean, because everything has a, has a financial base to it. But this is one that I want to specifically point out to, to make sure that we are tackling these targets or tackling certain objectives in policy.
So this is coming to us, I'm trying to find the list. It's coming to us many times.
It is coming to you many times. And so if you do want to take some more time to review the memo and to review what I, the framework that I put this in is essentially to give a little bit of, of background on each of the sections that, that we'll be talking about. And then specifically, what I did under each section, you'll see that there is a notation and revenues, it's a little bit, it's a little bit longer. But what you'll see under each section is essentially the revenue section, outcomes and follow-up. So specifically, the administration will be asking for, if you look on page 136 of the packet, to give you an example of, for revenues, we'd specifically want to make sure that we are defining those revenue objectives. And if you look at the proposed policy, you'll see those proposed objectives. Determine the utility rate study frequency. And some of these are very, they might be easy targets or benchmarks to set. Some may have more discussion. They'd be define the distribution method, method for the general fund sources to other funds. And then set grant, grant threshold for required feasibility analysis. So if we don't do anything else, we want to make sure that we're talking about those four targets or objectives or what have you in the revenue section. And so the, the same framework to each of the sections in the financial policy, that is how I lay that out to specifically say, here's the outcome that the administration would like the council to address specifically.
So what is it that you're looking for us to help you with tonight specifically?
Tonight would be the, my memo that, what, my memo provided you some additional information specifically on this section. You know, the policy is 20 plus pages long. But to specifically give some administrative guidance on what these sections mean, the primary reason for that, and to identify specifically the, the outcomes that are, are necessary in, in the policy. Things that we want to ensure that we're checking with council to say, are you, are you confident? Are you comfortable with this target or with, with these sets of principles? Similar to what, what we did in the introduction where we did some wordsmithing of principles, you know, overall guiding principles in financial policy.
Jen, what, what do you mean when you say define distribution method of general fund sources to other funds? What do you mean distribution method?
What I mean for that, the best example would be sales tax. So there is a, a current policy with regards to guiding where sales tax is, is distributed. And, and that's that percentage. So a percentage of sales tax goes to street operating fund and goes to the special capital projects fund. There is, and council will be seeing this, and this was a part of a memo from the long range capital or the long range financial, financial committee.
Finance committee.
Finance committee. We'll come up with the acronym. Essentially to, to simplify our funds. I've, I've been going through a, a fund accounting review. And so we have some obsolete funds. We have some funds that, that there's, there's, just should be a better aligned, you know, properly according to bars and according to GAAP accounting rules. And so for that particular fund, there is a percentage of sales tax that, that just essentially gets coded or posted, if you will, directly to that. Best practices, or essentially with sales tax coming, coming in as such a large amount of money, instead of for the council to consider receiving all sales tax into the general fund and then through your financial model, distribute. So that it may, there may be, in one year, you may want to transfer more money for capital improvement projects. And so there wouldn't be a defined percentage that we are, that is not flexible enough for the council to say, you know, here's where we want to put some money to capital investment in one particular year or a certain amount to cover debt service. So if you think of the financial model, that's essentially would be your tool to say, here's where we want our sales tax to go in these particular areas. And that would be done through the, through the budget process versus a hard and fast set percentage going directly to a number of funds. So that's, that's essentially would be a proposed revamp to a current policy for how sales tax gets distributed. Used?
No, I'm, I think I understand. Let me see if I can repeat it. Simply. It'll become part of our budget deliberations on identifying percentage of sales tax of the total. Just how those, where those, what other funds, certain percentages of sales tax gets distributed.
Certain percentages or dollar amounts. And the reason I say dollar amounts is because of debt service obligations. So if you were to issue council manic bonds for a particular reason or there is another council initiative to contribute for debt service, that's why I say a dollar amount because debt service amounts change every year.
Okay, that certainly would be new. I, I don't think we've really talked about what happens to sales tax. There's been some written rule out there or unwritten, maybe. And so much of it's going to go to those other funds. Now you actually want to make that a discussion point during budget deliberations. And you're going to tie it to the model and to the rest of the financial plan.
Yes.
Okay, we'll see.
Would it, would it then be beneficial then to allow you to absorb the, the memo? And then we can, because we do have some, some more time, some more work sessions. And then to have those conversations. And once you have that opportunity, then now we can, we can maybe quickly move through those, those areas that you have questions or need information about specific targets or, or proposed objectives or principles in the policy.
I was just going to say, Jen, that, that makes sense to me. And I, I appreciate the memo and the way that this is laid out, how everything is broken down by category, the different areas you're working on and then the different sections to look at. So it can be a guide as you're reading through all of this sort of a long policy. So I appreciate the way the memo is put together.
Yeah, this comes back.
Well, hold on.
Yeah, I'm not. on the 14th, another work session if needed, and then continued public hearing for possible adoption on September 5th, so.
That's right.
Let's see this a few times. Any questions for, move somewhere.
Jen, back in June, the only thing we had to work with, and I had, was a, a proposed financial management policy, an update, and, and I had asked, gone through that back then and asked a number of questions. And I'm having a hard time kind of mapping result of that conversation in the new material in this update. So did you do, did you make any changes at all to the proposed, because there's not track changes. So did you make any changes to that document at all between now and June?
Yes, there is a redline version, and if that would, if that would help to put those redline versions based on those conversations, I will add that to the next work session so that you can see what has, is already being crafted from the council-directed edits.
Is it manageable? Is it, is it, is it?
It is manageable.
Okay, thank you. That would help quite a bit, because I have a whole bunch of markups on the June document, and it was, I found it, I couldn't, I wasn't able to really see, and we talked about it, I had gone through a number of questions, and we talked about it. So I wasn't able to see if there, what the, easily see if what the, if they were reflected in this current version.
I will put those in there. I was, I was kind of toiling with, do I put that in? And then what I'll do is specifically have a date then on, because after every, every time where we have a conversation or there's a, a directed edit, then just to make sure that you knew, you know that that is the latest version. So we'll, we'll have that in the next work, work session packet.
Yeah, you could put it in the header, last revised, revision date or something.
Will do.
Anything else?
No, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Next and last item, a Jendelbel 7313, Capital Improvement Plan, including Transportation 2018 to 2022. And again, we have Jen here.
All right, I'm going to wrap up this evening then with an overview of the, what you received in the packet was a, two additional items, but the main ones for your consideration are an updated council Q and A with some additional responses from the administration. What is also included was a comparison of prior year plans, so a comparison of the 2018 through '22 CIP compared to the 14 through '19 plan, and then the 17 through '21 plan. And that framework to compare what had been in previous year plans was, was essentially using simple Xs. So it was taking the, the proposed 1822 plan and saying, yes, this project was in the prior year plan, and if you did not see Xs in that matrix, then it was a new project.
Is all the projects?
That, yes, that's correct. Yes. And then the other piece, just to, just to let you know and to make sure that you, that you saw this, is that the revised introduction, this, this included additional or revised summary listing of the projects, the debt information, the example of potential funding. If these, if the unfunded projects, essentially the, the council were to adopt the plan, to give you a scenario of the amount of debt that would be needed, and then a revised example on issuing some bonds, what that debt service obligation would be. So you'll see in the packet there, it is marked revised introduction, and that's all that it is. The, the project detail, obviously, the, the final plan will have all of the detail, it will have everything included about the projects, but the revised section essentially was a shifting around of the, the park plan, and then also adding in some sections based on the council's feedback with regards to funding. So for example, in the revised introduction, page 15, you can see that there is the proposed 1822 CIP by funding sources. There's cash flow analysis, and then one of the newer pages in the capital budget was the debt funding section, and that is on page 18 of the revised introduction. And that is an example, and similar to the, the council retreat, and in the forecasting and resource book, an example of the projects that do not have a funding source, or, or there's missing. There might, there might be a partial funding source, but debt would be required in order for that project to essentially come to fruition. And then at the, the bottom right-hand of that page 18 of the revised introduction is a revised strategy for essentially doing those projects. And just to give you a reminder of how that's laid out, in the table in the middle, the two columns for 18 and 19 essentially would be about a $4 million potential bond issue. Well, that would be an estimated debt payment of $434,000, and that was assumed added on a, for a 10-year repayment period. So to give the council an example of if you wanted to do these projects at this time, you would likely do a bond issue of X, and that would be a debt, the service obligation of X dollars. The question then would be, what's the funding source for that? And so we heard earlier tonight about transportation benefit district, there are certainly other funding sources for that, and that was provided in the, the fiscal and resource book too, for new sources of revenue. So that is what is, those revised pages in the introduction. So what I wanted to do is take any questions of the council and see what else we can provide the council if there's additional questions and/or things needed in the proposed capital budget.
There, I thought I saw in here somewhere that there is a recommendation that this go to planning policy next go-round, that we make the planning policy be added to the process? Planning Policy Commission?
I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Just, so I appreciate some of this, the new information in there that's, that's helps with some of our questions. I guess I'm, I'm still back on, on a couple of main questions is, the original list was in the CIP, that's not been touched at all, that's the part you've been working on, we haven't changed that at all in any way, right? At this point in time.
Are you referring to the, the pages in the introduction? There has been some revised.
To like projects?
To projects. For example, the, on page eight of the introduction, the central is supposed significant Park Plaza project, it is the fourth project down. That had been essentially, all of that project had been identified in the five-year plan, that was shifted, and so there's proposed $5 million in the five-year plan, starting in 2020, where there would start to make this capital investment, but the, the majority of this project was shifted out into future years. So that, that is one of the projects that was revised. There really was not many projects that had been identified as being revised.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I wouldn't be able to pick that out just going through this and figuring out a, a project here or there that's been changed without something, so without doing a lot of work line by line. So I'm trying to figure out if there's anything there, and that's one, that's great. Just looking at other ones, because I got, I'm still stuck a little bit with a couple that, from our discussions, I thought maybe weren't in there, or, you know, or the, what the priority actually is. We talked about how you got to priorities and, and, you know, suggested priorities of acceptable and all, and, and when you put them in there, but I don't really think the council's had much input on really any shifts in, in that, like moving one project up and one back, right? That kind of trading, which, which is really more important, you know, acceptable, desirable projects, other than the way they came to us. So I'm not sure how to prioritize those and how to get that information back to you, and making sure we had them all in the list, and that moving up and down. So that's part I'm, I guess I'm confused in. The other stuff, the, the new information on, you know, that answers some of our questions, and that's good, but at project-specific level, which we, at some point, we have to get back to.
That's right.
How do we, how do we deal with that?
I think what would be helpful would be to identify those projects that you propose that you would want to, to shift, and then have that, that dialogue with, with your council members in order to provide the administration direction on shifting a project. And that's, that's certainly something that we would be looking for the council to make that request to shift a project, and then, and you, as you can see, this is an example of, of what happens when it does, so.
And another example, looking at, I mean, I'd mentioned it the last time was the front street, streetscape, and I thought that's an important priority that we move up, but I don't know if that got moved up or not. So those kinds of things. So, yeah, so there, there were just kind of discussion, there wasn't, it wasn't specific, I want you to move this project up, kind of thing, right? So I don't know how that, those are sorting in there, so I'd like to see how we can make sure we look at that. If not, I can go back to the original list, if you want something, and we get very specific and go through it all, and send you an email and say, these should go up, these should go back, and if you missed this one, and you, this one should be thrown out. No, whatever, you know? If that's what you want, I can do that.
That is, that would be helpful, yes.
Okay, I will do that and get that to you then. Thank you.
So the next step for this that's in the packet is that it comes back to the full council on the second. Are we ready for that? Should we take action on the second?
An action? Not approval.
Adoption.
Yeah, it'd be adoption.
It's Monday?
Yeah.
Not ready. I'm going to give you a list of projects I think needs to.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, before, I think that, that discussion to me hasn't really happened, it's been partial. It's, we, I mean, we've talked about it in generalities, but I, I haven't sat there and seen.
This would be the setting where you, where you would identify those, those projects and then have that, that dialogue amongst council members to direct the administration to shift the projects that have been proposed.
I think we've become familiar with the new plan, and there's been a lot to become familiar with now, and I think I would agree that now that we've become familiar with the nuts and bolts, getting back to some substantive discussions about the actual plan, and I don't know how that impacts the schedule, and we can, you know, talk about that in a second, but it also kind of, we've got four people here, and we're a seven-person council, like it needs to be, everybody needs to be here. So that's, that's kind of where I'm leaning, another, one more session. And then I was going to ask Bob what the impact is. We've got budgeting going on. In August?
So the impact to shifting or adding another work session in August for the council work session would mean because of our, our turnaround time for getting prepared for the proposed budget, that is what we're bumping up against. And so it, certainly if we are, are very focused on shifting projects, if, if that is something that can be identified from individual council members about shifting projects, that would be helpful so that we could, we could show what those recommended shifts are, and to provide it in a way that is easily identifiable to you to say, if we start from the revised introduction, to give you then what changed. So that would be ideal, that it, the sooner we could have the council-provided edits, the better. And then we could have that as, essentially August, that, that final meeting then, and we would then have a, we'd have about 30, yeah, 30 days to turn capital budget around.
I know it's, I know it's tighter, but it's all brand-new to us.
Yeah.
Yes, and we got limited crew here.
And I'd like some feedback, because if I think some projects should be moved up, some other people might think they should be moved back, so we need to get that interaction as well, right?
Yes, that is. Comments?
Just a question for Bill. So do you have specific proposals today for us to consider?
I, not right up here, I mean, I had some from the last time, and, and look at them, and I can go over, I'll send an email out with, with those. There's not a ton of them, but there's definitely a few.
I mean, this is, I mean, if you have any of that, this would be a really good opportunity to discuss them.
Yeah, and I brought, and I brought a number of them up at the last meeting, but nothing was done with that, it doesn't look like, basically, you know, I mean, threw out some ideas, there's some concerns, but nothing, I don't know about what, you know, it hasn't changed. So, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure, that we have to have the interaction, say, okay, we're all agreeing that this one needs to change or not. Because right now, they're all in order by, you know, administration, put them in your best, you know, guess of, in the best order that you could do. We haven't really weighed in on that totally in my mind.
So this is the time to do that. Do you, I would love to hear your arguments for changes.
I didn't.
He said he wasn't prepared for that tonight.
Right. Because, I mean, the one I could tell off the top of my head is the front, front street, streetscape. I mean, we said we're going to do something very quickly on that, and if we look on here, it's almost three years out. That to me is not acceptable, you know, it is the one that, you know, that's, we said we're going to wait, and we're going to do that, and then we're going to, you know, get the plan, and then we're going to implement. That, that's not acceptable to me.
I'm also just kind of wondering about timeline and, and getting emails from council members, and, and one person saying, I'd like to move this up, and another person saying, I'd like to move this back. We only have four people here, and so it seems like to me like we would need to have a session where we, I mean, this was sort of a jam-packed evening as well, but that we would need to have some time to talk about that as a group, because I'm just not sure how, on the, on the other side, like how you would deal with all of those emails coming in and be able to, and maybe there is a way, maybe you've got a good way to work that through, but.
We have had, we have, so I think what, what we're all kind of saying is that efficiency would be key, we don't start at the beginning, and so there has been a lot of feedback about projects already. So it seems to me that that's the list we could start with, and if there was additional feedback, additional que, um... And if there was additional feedback, additional questions about additional projects, or like Bill, if you have something else that you've thought of.
I will do that.
Then to be efficient, send that email ahead of time. And then we could start with that list and work down that list. So we're not starting at the beginning. We have sort of a defined list to work from. And then we can, we're not limited to that, but we can start at a place of efficiency, that meeting. Because I know we're bumping up against it, but it is an all-new process.
What I would propose then, we'll craft a way to track those, project-specific. So I appreciate the, not starting from the beginning, but project-specific, and to send your request to shift a project. And we'll put that in a framework that the council can see, similar to the Q and A. But we'll keep it to, I would like this project to move here. Or if there is additional details, does that sound sufficient?
Yeah, and I'm happy to work with you on making that inefficient.
Okay.
In time. Other comments and questions? And then I'm going to address, we've got some questions that came in from the public. And I can either read them off, or I can ask them if they want to read those questions. Ryan?
Just wanted a clarification. So we'll get something in email, and then we can then respond and say, in addition to that, I would like to bring this forward.
Yes.
And then that would be captured and come back to the meeting.
Yes, that is the plan for that framework, if that works.
Does that work?
Yeah.
So doing pretty well? And so we got, so I'm going to call for a public comment if there is any people who want to make comments. No, kind of the last thing. I mean, I can be a little flexible. The last thing. You want to sneak something in?
So my comments on the last thing was the process of how things get on the list, and then how they get prioritized, and how the public and the council feeds into that. At this point in time, I am lost. And I really work hard not to be lost in this city on these things. I follow everything as much as I possibly can. And I really don't like being lost. Part of it is just that we didn't see this for two years, and so everything feels sort of chaotic. But I want to know how, what the process is from beginning to end, starting in January and going through December for the finances, and how that threads through the public and the council. And that would make me happier, never really happy, but happier.
Anybody else, Mary? About your list of questions?
No, because my concern is, since this was first issued, I have continued to ask the status of those projects. One being the Newport Way from South 54th to Lakemont Boulevard. That's been completely dropped off the list. But from all the CIP and all the traffic studies, it clearly shows that there has to be a third turn lane, center turn lane, for those, the new projects in there to meet concurrency. So how can we drop that from the list? I've not had any response to that at all. And I've been asking since this first came out for public view in, when was it, April? Also have not had anything, trying to get it moved up on priority, the S-900 project, or from, the Newport Way from S-900 to South 54th. So that is done at the same time as the developer. So we're not wasting a bunch of money and disrupting us for five to six years versus a two-year maybe road project. That's not been addressed. And then I still haven't seen anything about the CFOS and what we're going to do with those lease. And I think we need to come clean and be transparent on what's happening there. But I've never gotten an answer back in writing, and I've asked for it and requested it for the last three months. Thank you.
So while here, I sent a note to the council as a whole with some input. And it had to do with both Section 3.0 and 4.0, the expenditures and the revenue sections of the proposed changes. And both, to me, seem to be weighted towards business and not towards what the city wants and how it wants to grow and how we want to become. Expenditure talks about specifically. So when we looked at development, we're currently shooting to recover 80% of the cost by VFEs that it costs for development. And that doesn't seem to align with 3.1, 3.2, and 3.5, where cost recovery is more in line with what those revenues are supposed to be. So I don't understand that piece. Section 4.1 specifically had, I think, five changes listed that talked about what the purpose of expenditure, I'm sorry, 3.0, I think is revenue, 4.0 is expenditures. 4.1 talks about, first thing is that we're going to support local businesses and merchants. It doesn't talk about who want to become as a city, good governments, communications. It doesn't match, or I don't see anything that matches. These are our revenues and expenditures, and how that matches to goals. And like Tree Canopy or Livable City, it doesn't talk about measuring from the perspective of the people that live in Issaquah. I would like to see some specific measures called out that says, this is how we're spending our money, and this is how it gets us towards that goal or vision, because we get what we measure. And if we're not getting that, then we're not measuring the right things. So that's what we're going to get. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Sheldon, did you have something to say? Okay. I am, that the last time on our agenda, all right. Have anything else? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.